Terrific. First of all, I'd like to apologize for starting this meeting a little late. I've had some technical difficulties here getting on, but I think we're, I think we're all set. So with that, I'd call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Monday, July 13th, 2020, to order. If we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which is.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that are here this evening. I believe I see JP Vanoyen, who is our vice chairperson. James Fitzsimmons. This commission member Jeff Cohen, also a commission member. Rocco Madarazzo, our secretary. Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the commission. And Eva Allenson, who is also an alternate on the commission. Also, from a staff standpoint, we have our town planner Casey Hand is here. Tom Talbot, who is assisting our town planner is also here this evening. As well as, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl Ann, but Cheryl Ann Tubby, who is our recording secretary, is also on the, on the, on this call, on the meeting. And I'm Jim Saitter, the chairperson of the, of the commission. And before I get started, I just like to, as I did at the other two meetings, just start off by explaining how the meeting is going to progress. Based on, this is being conducted again at. As, as many of our, are in your homes, if your microphones are not muted, please mute it. And if it's not possible, be, please be conscious of noise around you. Microphones on different devices have different levels of sensitivity, so please be aware of that. The go-to meeting system is not ideal to deal with, with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if acknowledged or recognized, or if I recognize you. There's an exchange going on between a presenter and a questioner. Each of you must finish speaking before the responding person can start. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If individuals are not participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all, so the person who has the floor can be heard. If I'm muted while you are speaking, please be patient. I will allow you to resume speaking as soon as reasonably possible. Most interview individuals viewing this meeting, I assume are familiar, assume are familiar how planning and zoning meetings are conducted. For those who are not familiar, here's the general overview. The applicant and/or its representative makes a presentation of an application, after which Mrs. Hand or Mr. Talbot will then have the opportunity to ask questions or provide additional information. Members of the commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions. I'll ask each commission member individually, beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons. They would like to have, or ask any questions concerning the application. While the commission is only required to allow members of the public to comment on applications that require a public hearing, however, it's been the commission's practice to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on all applications. Once the public has had the opportunity to comment, the applicant will have the opportunity to make any final comments, and commission members will have the opportunity to ask any final questions or discuss the application. Once completed, the commission will take action on the application. For members of the public who want to be heard during the meeting, please keep this in mind. There's a chat bar you can open, clicking on the icon that looks like a speech bubble near the top right portion of the screen. When I ask for public comment, please type into the chat bar that you'd like to speak. Each will be called upon in the order of the respective request. Members of the public who have logged on, just watch. If you do not intend to participate in the meeting, please turn off your camera. If you've dialed into the toll-free number and are listening through a traditional telephone, I have no way to identify you. I will not see your name or phone number. I will simply see you as caller 123, depending on how many callers we have. That to call on you for comment in order, in which I see the call. Those who logged into the meeting through a smartphone or a computer, please select the screen name. Anyone speaking for the applicant or a member of the public must identify themselves by providing their name and address for the record. Those who review the meeting, the agenda materials are posted on the website. There's a tab on the right side below the heading, "This Week's Meetings." But hopefully that will give everybody an idea exactly how the, the meeting will be, will be conducted. The next order of business is to consider a, consider the approvals of our meeting of June 8th, 2020. Are any commission members, any?
Any comments?
Or like to make a motion on the meeting, yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 8th, 2020 minutes.
Have a motion by Mr. Vanoyen. Do we have a second? Second by, yeah, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And the minutes are, are approved. This brings us now to our, actually, before we go to our first order of business, I'd like to announce that there are two applications that are not going to be heard this evening. The first is Agenda Item Number Five. It's a site plan, multi-family conversion, W Yolbrick at 7 Curtis Avenue. There's no action on that, on, on that this evening. And the next one is number eight on our agenda. It's a site plan for TD Warren Family Trust, 809 North Main Street Extension. And again, with that, there is no action. Brings us now to our first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a zoning text amendment for 4.24 Rental Housing Opportunity District, Sunwood Development. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Chairman, we have an interdepartmental referral dated May 11th, 2020, signed by the town engineer. We have correspondence dated June 29th, 2020. Sunwood Development, I'm acting town planner. We have a memo to Tom, Tom Talbot, acting town planner, from Allison Kaposchinsky. Dated May 14th, 2020. We have interdepartmental referral dated June 5th, 2020, signed by the fire marshal. Correspondence dated June 29th, 2020, to Sunwood Development. Again, signed by Thomas Talbot, acting planner. Correspondence dated June 29th, 2020, to Sunwood Development. Again, signed by Thomas Talbot, town planner, acting town planner. Inter-office memorandum to Tom Talbot, acting town planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated July 8th, 2020. Correspondence, State Department of Transportation, to Mr. Christopher Giuliani, dated April 16th, 2020, from Paul S. Mazacato. We have a correspondent memo, Inland Wetlands and Waterways Commission, from Allison Kaposchinsky.
Mr. Madarazzo, if I could back you up, I think you're, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you're being a little bit aggressive in everything that you're reading for this, or entering into the record for this particular application. This is 502-20. I, I think you might have, because at least, yeah. What, perhaps if you could, if you could please start over, and I believe we ended, I believe it just ends at C.
Is that correct, Mr. Talbot?
Yeah, it just ends with 502-20. We have A, but we have the application itself, and then we have A, B, and C.
I've got A. There's A, B, C. Sorry about that, yeah, it was 503, my bad. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, I can, if you could please just start over, just start with the, you know, the application, which isn't labeled, and then go from there.
Gotcha. Interdepartmental referral, application 502-20, dated May 11th, 2020, signed by the town engineer. Correspondence dated June 29th, 2020, to Sunwood Development, from Thomas Talbot. Memo to Tom Talbot, from Allison Kaposchinsky, dated May 14th, 2020. I think that was, it was a set of plans with that?
Uh, no, but there was just, if we could also just note, an application for zoning regulation change, which is dated March 27th, 2020. And I believe that clears everything for this application. So with that, I would ask the applicant and/or its representative if they would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation. Yes, Mr. Cohen, excuse me, what's that, yes, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I, I think we need the legal notice written, read as well.
Yes, we do, and I thought I had asked for that, but apparently I did not, or wasn't heard.
Right, thanks.
Mr. Madarazzo, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please read the legal notice for 503-20.
Okay, looking for the legal notice.
Okay, let me do this. It's, uh, it's application 503-20, zoning map amendment for Sunwood Development from R18 Single Family Residential, Residential to RHOD Residential Housing Opportunity District, or a .5 acre parcel located on eastern portion of property located at 52 Woodhouse Avenue.
Sorry about that, it looks like I don't have the legal notice.
Text you. Okay, hang on, we have this. It's in the wrong order. This is the legal notice for, for this application. I apologize to everyone. It's 502-20. It's a zoning text amendment for Sunwood Development Corp. To amend section 4.24 Residential, or Rent, Rental Housing Opportunity District, RHOD, or the Wallingford Zoning Regulations Concerning Maximum Lot Size and Rear Yard Requirement Zone, RHOD. Now I think we're all squared away on this. Good, thank you, Mr. Cohen. I appreciate the heads up. Now, with that, we've gotten through all the items here. Again, if the applicant would, please introduce himself and begin their presentation.
Mr. Saitter, my name for the record is Bob Weedman Jr. I'm the owner of Sunwood Development. First, I guess I'd just like to clarify, can you hear me okay? So I'm speaking loudly and everything?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Also with me tonight, if there's any technical questions, is Christopher Giuliano from Giuliano Associates. That would be helpful with any presentations, excuse me, with technical questions. Just as a matter of housekeeping, the public hearing notice was mailed to a butters within 500 feet of this property last week, as required by the regulations. Fortunately for me, we're next to the towers, and I got to send out 160 or so mailing, so that was a lot of fun. We're going to start, I believe, with the regulation change. We'll talk about that, and then we'll pick up on the map, and down the road, we'll talk about the site plan, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're going to act on all of these on an individual basis. So the first one would be the text, then it would be the map, and then it would be the application itself. And we'll handle this, you know, each separately and vote on them individually. So once you complete one presentation, the commission will have the opportunity to, you know, discuss it and then vote on that, and then we'll move through the other ones.
Very good. Okay, so the zone regulation change. There are two changes to the current regulation of the RHOD zone. One being section 2.1, referring to the maximum size of the parcel, and raising it from, I believe it was 3.5 acres to 4 acres. And that is because, what we'll talk about with the zone map change, we are in the process of acquiring a budding property, which would add about a half acre to this project. And so that's why that portion of the regulation needed to be modified. The second section to be modified is section D6C, which references the setback requirements. Setback requirements are, are in this zone as proposed, or as currently written, are for 30-foot rear yard setback. We're requesting reduction to 20 feet for a rear yard setback, only in those areas where the property abuts other open space or another multifamily community. In this case, the tower's condominium property. So those are the two items. Obviously, we can get into the reasons why those are requested when we start the other portions of the application, but that's in a nutshell, the, the application for the regular change.
Thank you, Mr. Weedman. Mrs. Hand, would you have any comments on this, this application? And if you don't mute yourself, there you go.
So, um, the only thing I would, I would comment on here is, I would just remind the commission that this is a regulation change, so it's not specific to this project or this property. This is a change, a proposed change to the actual regulation itself, the part we're talking about right now. I didn't, I don't have any objections to what's proposed. I think everything's reasonable, and I think everything's consistent with the intent of the regulation. I mean, obviously, it is being proposed to facilitate this project, but I don't think there's anything inappropriate. But I just want to remind the commission that this would, these changes would then apply to any application that might use this regulation. Although, this regulation is, is probably unlikely to get used in many other locations. I think there's a more general reg that would be used in most other locations.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. With that, I'll go to the commission members, or commission members would like to speak. Mr. Fitzsimmons, do you have any comments?
No comments on this.
Thank you. Mr. Vanoyen? No comments from Mr. Vanoyen?
No comments.
Mr. Cohen?
No comments.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Madarazzo?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hine?
No, no questions, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Mr. Allison. Nothing from me, from me either, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay, thank you. And I have no questions for the applicant on this particular application. So with that, unless the applicant has any other further questions that he would like to make, Mr. Weedman?
No, I'm awesome, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to close our, close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 502-20, zoning text amendment, 4.24 Rental Housing Opportunity District, Sunwood Development.
Second.
Before, excuse me, let me back up. Before I act on this, this application, thank you, Mr. Talbot, getting a little bit ahead of myself. This is a public hearing. Is there any members from the public that would like to speak on this application? If there are any members from the public to speak on the application, please, again, we have the chat, the little chat bubble on the upper right portion of the, of the screen. Please indicate if you'd like to speak on the application by writing in there. And I'll wait just a few minutes. At this point, I do not see any, any members of the public that would like to comment on the application. So, Mr. Vanoyen, I'm going to ask you for a, if you would, a redo on a, on a motion to close the public hearing, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing for application 502-20, zoning text amendment, section 4.24 Rental Housing Opportunity District, Sunwood Development.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo?
Yes.
And Mr. Vanoyen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public hearings closed. At this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 502-20, a zoning text amendment for Sunwood Development Corp. To amend section 4.24.1 and 4.24.16.1C, let Shell Housing Opportunity District, RHOD, of the Wallingford Zoning Commissions, increase maximum lot size permitted, and to reduce rear yard requirements on certain portions of a site, as submitted for 3/20, effective date 7/17/20, because it fits within the character of the zoning reg.
I have a motion on the application, do we have a second?
Second.
Again, by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Vanoyen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The application is approved. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, and hopefully I won't mess this up as much as I did before on the first one. It's again, a, it's a public hearing. It's a zoning map amendment for R18 to an H, to an RHOD, Sunwood Development, 52 Woodhouse Avenue. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, please read the legal notice first, and note all correspondence for the record, and please don't be overly aggressive.
Okay. So for a legal notice, I'm going to reference the zoning text amendment, 502-20, is that correct?
No, it's 503-20, these were put out of order. It's the, it's number, it's number one.
I have, I have no legal notices.
Excuse me?
I have no legal notices.
Okay.
Items 13 and 14.
I'll read, I will read the legal notice for you.
Is it the 20 dash?
It is. It's 50, 503-20. I'll read the legal notice, and then if you would note all correspondence for the record, please.
Sure.
Legal notice for 503-20. It's a zoning map, zoning map amendment for Sunwood Development from R18 Single Family Residential to RHOD Residential Housing District, or a .5 acre parcel located on the eastern portion of property located at 52 Woodhouse Avenue. And now, Mr. Madarazzo, again, if you would please note all correspondence relative to 50-20.
503-20.
50, yes, 503-20.
And for the record, I just found the legal notice.
Good, we'll note that for the record, thank you.
We have interdepartmental referral, application 503-20, dated June 5th, 2020, signed by the fire marshal. They have correspondence dated June 29th, 2020, to Sunwood Development, signed by Thomas Talbot, town planner. I believe those are the only two notices I have.
No, we're seeing. No, see. And also, if we would just note the application for a change of the official zoning map, and that's dated 6/5/2020. So again, at this particular point in time, if the applicant would please introduce applicant and/or his representative, introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Bob Weedman Jr. from Sunwood Development. This portion of the application regarding the map change, in the packet submitted with this application, you should have received a copy of the map showing it. I do have a copy, if you'd like it on the screen, I'll leave it up to you if you think is necessary.
Yes, we would like, we would like it on the screen. If you can just wait for a moment, so I can find you, and then I can make you a presenter. And you're the one that's going to put it on your screen, Mr. Weedman?
Yes, that's, I'll take care of that for you, sir.
Okay, you know, you'd have the ability to be a presenter and be able to put that on the screen.
I'm going to start with this plan, which shows, let me blow it up a little bit, so you can see it a little more clearly. It's over in the center here, maybe. There it goes, okay. What is highlighted in blue is the property that we're asking to change their zone map to include in this zone, the hashed area, which is a very oddly shaped property, with a bunch of appendages going out to Woodhouse Avenue and also over to Florence Avenue, is the current property that is zoned RHOD. This blue area is a portion of number 52, and we received a variance earlier this spring to do a lot line revision and incorporate this area that, again, is highlighted in blue into our overall parcel. So that brings our property from approximately three acres up to about three and a half acres. And it just made for a more practical way of developing this particular site. There was a sewer line that runs parallel with the eastern side of this property. And that's why we asked to have this incorporated into the, the map zone amendment. And I guess I would turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the, well, first of all, I guess I would ask Mrs. Hand if she has any questions concerning this, this application.
No, I just want to make sure, Mr. Weedman, you said that the notices were sent out.
We don't have some of those. Excuse me, Mrs. Hand?
Oh, I just wanted to ask Mr. Weedman, I think he said the notices were sent out for the, everyone within 500 feet. I just want to make sure of that.
Yes, for the record, this is Bob Weedman again, and yes, the notices were sent out for both the map change and the zoning regulation change combined.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll again, go to the members of the commission to see if they have any questions. Again, starting with Mr. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
No comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen?
No questions.
Mr. Madarazzo?
Nothing.
Mr. Vanoyen?
No comments.
And Mr. Hine?
No comments.
And last but not least, Mr. Allison. I'm not going to be the odd man out, no comments from me. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, if there are no other questions from commission members, I will again go to the public. This is a, is a public hearing. And at this point in time, I do have a note from a Sue Brazinski. She says, "I've not received anything in the mail. Could someone kindly explain what the expansion is?" Yes, we will, we'll explain the expansion actually for the, for the application that is, is going to be taken up next. But if, I guess, Mr. Weedman, if you would like to just give any further insight into this before we take action on this application, and then possibly move toward the, the next application that somewhat goes with this, with this project.
Certainly. Again, for the record, Bob Weedman Jr., Sunwood Development. I, I probably should have done a little I probably should have done a little better job of outlining where this property is. So in the center of this property where I'm showing with my cursor is the gas station on Woodhouse Avenue, running north, south here is Woodhouse Avenue on the western side of the property. Harrison Avenue runs across this direction, and this is the intersection of center, East Center Street and Woodhouse Avenue up in this lot, top left corner. This, I'll call this oval shape is the 500 foot radius, and the notifications were sent to everyone who has property with that area. I don't know that the woman that just questioned whether she received the notice, I'm not sure what her address is, and I can't that we did send it to her, but I believe we did notify everyone in that oval that as we were required to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weederman. We have some more questions. Mrs. Brzezinski indicated, I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. She said she's at 100 way before the towers. And I assume that's 100 Woodhouse Avenue. And I'm waiting for a response.
Yes, again, Mr. Chairman, Bob Weedman, I do have 100 Woodhouse Avenue and her name on it. I was going to clarify that. These addresses are provided by the assessor's office, so it would go by the grand list of last October, I believe is the most current grand list. But in this case, 100 Woodhouse Avenue is Ms. Brzezinski's name, so it should have been sent to her.
Do you have verification, excuse me, do you have verification that it was sent? I assume you get a return card. Is that correct or no?
No, actually, because of the virus, there is no requirement that receipts be collected for the notifications. It's a little different now because of this whole pandemic. So I do not have receipts for any of the mailings, but I do have a list of everyone that I mail to.
Mrs. Hand, I see you anxious. Maybe you're looking to comment. Is that correct or not?
Well, I guess I'd, I'd ask for Tom to weigh in because he's been dealing with this, but I'm not aware that the mailing requirement was different.
They're all different.
There has to be posted on the website or mailed.
Yeah, I, on the, on the town website or regular mail. It's no longer certified mail during this period, executive order. And there's, and there's no sign requirement. So as far, in looking at the executive order, I think that if these things did get sent out to everyone by regular mail, then they've complied. The problem with that is it's not easy to verify. I have the list of every place that he sent it out to. But there are no receipts.
So you have the list.
I have the list. Yes, it is on the list, but that's all we're going to get for, for the executive order.
Did, did, Mr. Tom, does the timeframe still apply?
What's that?
Were the time?
I'm sorry, what?
Were the timeframes still the same or did that not apply either?
I think the timeframes are the same, I believe. No, I'm not even sure. I have the executive orders.
Okay.
Again, for the record, this is Bob Weedman. I can verify that the timeframes were still the same. I can't tell you off the top of my head, the executive order that references this, but there was an executive order done back in the early portion of the pandemic, back in January, February. That covered this issue, because there were concerns that we're going to be unable to, you know, get into post offices and things like that to actually, and deliver these types of things.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a comment and just, just look for some direction here from our town planner. I do have a comment from Sue Brzezinski. She said, it's not a big deal that she did not get the letter. It's more that I wanted to know what is happening to this property. So my question is, knowing what we have now, from a notification standpoint, are we okay with this and should be okay just to simply move forward?
Yeah, it seems like we're fine. I know I looked at it last week, and I know Tom looked at it, so it seems like we're fine.
Okay, so we've, we've met the, or the applicant has met the requirement, and we would have no problem in going forward. Okay, and with that, again, if there's no other comments from, from the public. At this point in time, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 503-20 zoning map amendment, R 18, R H O D. Sunwood Development 52 Woodhouse Ave.
Thank you. We have a motion to close the public hearing, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
I'll, I'll second the motion, and I'll vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Vanoy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public hearings closed at this point in time. I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 503-20, a zoning map amendment to the official zoning map of the town of Wannister for Sunwood Development. From R 18, single family residential to R H O D rental housing opportunity district. For a point five acre parcel located on the eastern portion of the property located at 52 Woodhouse Ave. As shown on map entitled property and topography, yeah, survey, lot line review, revision. Land of Mario R. and Stella Monahoe, 5256 Woodhouse Ave, Wannister, Connecticut. Dated 116, effective date 71720 because fits within the character of the zoning regulations.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Can we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
And Mr. Vanoy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The application's been approved. Now, we're going to jump down to new business. It's item number four on the agenda. It's a site plan, Sunwood Development. 52 and 88 Woodhouse Avenue. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record. Mr. Madarazzo.
Yep. Are we, are we skipping away on item number three?
We're going right now to the Sunwood Development, which is 204-20. So we're consistent with, you know, with the presentation for Sunwood Development. And we'll come back to item number three.
We have correspondence dated June 29th, 2020, Sunwood Development from Thomas Talbot, town planner. You have inner office memorandum from Tom Talbot, acting planner from Eric Hoover, senior engineer, dated July 2020. We have correspondence, State Department of Transportation, dated April 16, 2020. We have memo to inland wetlands and watercourses mission from Allison Kapitinsky. Dated May 27, 2020. We have memo to Christopher Giuliano, Giuliano's associate, from Allison Kapitinsky, dated April 17, 2020. We have correspondence from Allison Kapitinsky, dated July 9, 2021. And instead of plans dated July 10, 2020.
Good. Thank you, Mr.
I sent you all another attachment.
Oh, we didn't get it. Okay. Yes, we have another attachment. Reiterate. And here's another item to the.
Yeah, this would be attachment 204-20G. It's July 7th. It's from, it's to Thomas Talbot, planner from Robert Weedman. This is a series of responses to my earlier correspondence with him. Says that no variance, variance information will be added to the plans. Comment number two, no response necessary. Comment number three, plans will be revised to show signs in conformant with sign, in conformance with sign regulations noted. I mean, B, three, lighting will be provided throughout the community by way of lighting mounted on each building. Lighting for the parking lot in southeast corner will be provided by light poles shown on revised plan. These lights will be in compliance with section 6.26C of the zoning regulations. Comment 3C, recreation areas are provided in the rear of each building. Notes will be added to plans showing location of these areas. Comment 3D, if requested by the commission, we can discuss the snow storage areas expected utilized. Comment 3E, refuge area is located per section E 12 of the R H O D regulations. Comment 3F and G zoning tables will be revised as requested. Comment 3H, there is no access easement in favor of 52 Woodhouse Avenue. But they retain the rights to use their existing driveway and no rights or losses result of our development. Comment 3I, additional landscaping will be provided at the north end of the parking area as requested. Comment 3J, affordability plan, rent calculations will be updated at the time townhouses are offered for rent. Information is provided to help explain how rental rates are determined. Comment 3K, parking is provided in accordance with the R H O D parking regulations as revised. And also provides additional parking for 90 Woodhouse Avenue. As has been historically. Please let me know if you have, if you need additional information or clarifications to any of our responses.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Yeah, I believe that takes care now of all of our correspondence. So at this particular point in time, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Bob Weedman Jr. with Sunwood Development. Also with me again tonight is Christopher Giuliano from Giuliano Associates, surveyor and engineer for the project. So if there's any technical questions, he can certainly respond to those questions. What I've put up on the screen for everyone's view is our landscape plan that's included in your package. We just called it to make it a little easier to see where parking is, where paved driveways are, where buildings are, and where the grass and landscaped areas are on this property. As, as discussed earlier, this project is, has an affordable component under 830G. And we're proposing 36 units, similar to what was previously approved without the additional half acre of land. So the density actually went down slightly from the previously approved apartment. There was a single apartment building originally proposed. Located generally behind the gas station. Again, with my cursor, I'll just show you sort of in this general area with some parking along, if I recall right, the back of the gas station. And then this area up in the northern portion was all parking. So we've split the building up into four distinct buildings, townhouse style buildings. And actually, very interesting, I've always felt that there was a need for townhouse type development rather than, for rental. Rather than apartments where there's common hallways and elevators. I guess I may be a little bit psychic because given the pandemic going on, the elevators are one of the real sticking points to both commercial and a higher density residential development. Try to keep social distancing and so forth. So I'm hoping that we've come up with a plan that's very appropriate for the times. There will be, there's 36 units in total. 11 of those units will be affordable. There'll be again in four buildings, 32 of the units will be two bedroom townhomes, and four of the units will be three bedroom townhomes. In a moment, I'll bring up the elevation so we can see what the buildings themselves look like. The site plan does meet all the requirements of the now revised regulations that were just previously approved. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I'm not sure if it was right into the record, and if it hasn't, I'll make sure we get a copy to staff. We have already submitted this application and plan to Connecticut DOT. They've already reviewed and approved the plans as we submitted them. With a couple of minor modifications, but they, there's, those changes have been incorporated into this plan that you're looking at. Parking was intentionally located between the buildings to try to give it a visual buffer and sort of hide it from view from the abutting property owners, properties, and also from the streets. So you'll see the majority of the parking is kind of in the center of the development with the buildings kind of surrounding it. Obviously makes for an efficient layout, but also you don't have this massive pavement that's visible from, from offsite. There, there was a question that came up late in the design process. That 90 Woodhouse Avenue, which is just off the lower end of this plan over in the, on the south of this parking area. Because these properties were owned by different property owners, but within the same family, there was historically use of five parking spaces in the old driveway that went back to the commercial building that's currently on the site. They had created an easement to provide five spaces for that property. Unknowns to us until just recently, we were able to modify our plan to add five additional spaces. Actually, four additional spaces because previously we had one more than we actually needed. So currently, we comply with the parking requirements based on the current parking regulations. And have five additional spaces and comply with the easement and allow the property owner at number 90 to utilize five of the parking spaces in this lower area and still stay in compliance. I just wanted to point that out to everyone. As Tom mentioned in his, his comments and my responses, he asked for some additional landscaping up in this northern end against near the property line here. So that as people come in this upper driveway, driving down through here, their headlights aren't shining in the backyards of the couple of homes that are actually on Harrison Avenue, but their backyards would have but our property. So we've added some additional landscaping to the screen and buffer of that area. Tom also requested some clarification on the Montague property, which is this, this is 52-56 in this location. There's existing parking. I believe there are four or five spaces in this location. And then there's a driveway that goes to their garage, a two car garage. This is a three family house. This is existing parking. And historically, they've used this access driveway, which was originally a paper street. Many years ago, it was, and I can't tell you all the technical issues. Maybe Christopher can, can chime in on this if necessary. But this was a paper street, so he had legal access to utilize this, even though he did not own it. Mr. Hearn is the current owner or Fairway Apartments LLC. And we will maintain this paved area and allow him to continue using this as access. So we have not taken any of his rights away in that area, and actually now we'll have the responsibility maintaining it, and he'll have the pleasure of using it. So I think it's a benefit to everyone in the, in the area. Regarding the architectural design, again, I'll, I'll show you the, the plans in just a moment. And as per the regulations, the affordable units and the market rate units will be identical, both in exterior style. Interior floor plans and finishes of both the interior and exterior. So there'll be no differentiation in the style, quality of the units, the size of the units are all going to be identical. And if we get into the affordable affordability plan, I can talk to you a little bit more about how that is going to play out at the end of the presentation. We're also going to include a variety of siding materials and colors so that these are not just going to be large monolithic blobs of, of color. Try to make this very attractive. Do a nice job of doing some landscaping throughout the community. As you can see, there's a fairly extensive amount of green space all the way around this area. As you can see, there's a fairly extensive amount of green space all the way around this area. Again, as my memo back to Tom or my comments or responses back to Tom, we have the affordable units dispersed throughout the community. So that they're not all consolidated in one particular location.
Mr. Weedman, if I could interrupt you, could you please just point those out, please? Affordable units.
Yep, I can give you a list of my unfortunately, I don't have these these individual units lettered, but I'll try to go through them with you. I can. Starting with building A, which is this back building, this is an eight unit building. The way we've numbered these is starting as you come in, all of these are numbered one through eight in this direction, one through ten in building B, in building C and D, we've numbered them one through nine in this direction. So we'll start your counting from this general central location, just for clarity. A two, A three and A seven are what I'm proposing to be affordable in that building. In building B, were you looking at building, I'm sorry, unit B two, B six, I'm sorry, B four, B six, which is one of the three bedroom units, B nine. And then in this building, D, we have unit D two, D five, D six and D seven. I'm sorry, D eight.
Okay.
So try to disperse them, these three.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
No, I'm just saying, just just observing, they seem to be dispersed, you know, in a, at least I think in a, in a very, at least from my opinion, a very reasonable manner throughout the development. But please continue. Thank you.
Okay, well, while we're on that subject, so let me just talk a little bit. I don't not sure how much detail you want to get into the affordability plan, but but let me tell you how I I believe this is a little bit different than a for sale product. If if these were for sale, we would designate certain units to be affordable and they would be deed restricted to never be used for anything but an affordable unit. And if they're sold to a subsequent owner, they would still be under that same requirement. In this case, at least it's my opinion, how I read the regulations and if someone interprets it differently, let me know. As long as we maintain the thirty percent and keep them dispersed, there does not seem to be a requirement that a particular unit be designated affordable and stay that way. And I think there's actually a benefit to that. The reason I I feel that way is if we have a unit that is affordable and we have an affordable tenant in that unit. And at some point, hopefully, they get a promotion, a salary increase and they no longer qualify for an affordable unit. If they're in an affordable unit, their alternative would either be to move to a a non affordable unit, a market rate unit within the community or leave our property. My feeling is what I'd like to be able to do is allow them to stay in the property. And this could also happen if you're going from say a sixty percent unit, sixty percent of median income to an eighty percent median income. It's still a qualified unit, but it would change its calculation from sixty to eighty percent. It would allow us to keep that household in place. And then the next available unit or potentially one that may already be available would become the affordable unit. So it might change location, but we would still again maintain the number of units. Logistically, I think this makes more sense. Again, maybe I'll stop with that in case I'm not clear on my explanation, if anybody has any questions regarding that.
Any anyone have any questions? Mrs. Hand, do you have any questions on that?
Just one, I noticed and and I agree with the interpretation, Mr. Weedman and I have talked about that. Yeah, and I think that's typically the way it's handled with rental units. I noticed that there weren't any affordable units in building, I think C, is that right? So my question is if, or at least to start with, so if if that was the next available, if one of those were the next available units, those would be, that would be the one made affordable still.
Yes, Bob Weedman. Yes, currently, as I said, the the C units, the difference between the C units and the other three buildings is this is an elevated building with garages underneath. Obviously, for for practical reasons, I prefer those not to be the affordable units, being that they have garages. But you are correct, if we had the situation where the next available unit happens to be in C building and we're required to have an affordable unit, then we would make that an affordable unit at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. If you continue, please, Mr. Weedman.
Certainly. Tom also questions site lighting. When I show you the elevations, you'll see that all of these units have small front porches and will use recessed lighting, down lighting. So that would be full cutoff and comply with your regulations as far as lighting, the general parking area in the front of the buildings. There will be some pole lighting in this parking area in the southeast corner. And we will provide details on what that lighting is. So again, they're a full cutoff. The light does not intrude in adjoining properties and complies with all your regulations regarding lighting. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, one of the requirements of the regulations is that about fifteen hundreds or a minimum fifteen hundred square feet of land is available for passive recreation. I think that was originally put in place because there was a large block of apartment building with really no outdoor space for any individual particular unit. They wanted to just make sure that there was some area of green space for everyone to utilize. In this situation, we have well in excess of that. I haven't done the calculation, but probably in the neighborhood of twenty or thirty thousand square feet. Obviously, the green areas behind all these buildings will be in common. So this is not like a condominium or a townhouse community where everyone has their own private backyard. These areas are going to be left in their natural state, you know, lawns. But kids will be able to play football, kick a soccer ball, throw a frisbee, utilize all of these outdoor areas throughout the complex with no restriction. So I think we more than comply with that requirement. That's really the extent of the presentation regarding the site plan. The only other thing, again, I didn't know how detailed you wanted to get into the affordable affordability plan and the management of that plan. I'm happy to talk about it if there are questions. I just don't want to bore everybody with another twenty minutes of me going through the plan line by line. But you're, I'm welcome. I'm happy to do it if you'd like to.
I think if you could give us just kind of the cliff notes, I guess one of the questions I have, is there an affordability time period for this project? Yeah, on, you know, on say single family that are units they're being sold, there's generally an affordability period ranging from maybe forty years to fifty years. But with this project, is there an affordability period for this for this project?
Yes, there is. And this this was in, this was not changed from the original affordability plan. I'd really just modified this plan, the affordability plan, that is, to comply with our site plan. But we did not make any significant changes to it. The previous plan called for fifty year affordable period and we're maintaining that same fifty year period, which is quite honestly in excess of the eight thirty G requirement. But the whole concept of this from a town perspective is to create affordable units and we have no objection to that timeframe.
Okay, you know, and perhaps if you could just if for commission members that might not have been familiar with this application or might not been on the commission when the original project was approved. If you could give just a very brief overview as to the you know, the affordability, the regulations itself and what's in your affordability plan, if you would. Again, not the not the twenty minute.
Okay, so it was a single three story building, again, located in this general, what I'll call the southern section of this property between buildings C and D. There was thirty six units in that building with a common hallway elevator building. And there was a single family house that originally sat where this parking lot is located. That has since been torn down. So there were originally thirty six units. But again, it excluded this half acre parcel where building B is. And the parking again was mostly in this northern area. I believe there was some parking behind the gas station in this general area. The affordable component was very similar. And again, I believe they were dispersed throughout the building, just like like we're proposing on different floors and different locations within the building. So obviously, the biggest difference is we were providing larger units, all two bedroom and four three bedroom units. And we basically created those three bedroom units in order to differentiate the elevations. Again, I'll show you that shortly. The one of the changes that we've done is originally they had a private non, I'm sorry, for profit company managing the affordable component of this. We've had discussion with the Wallingford Housing Authority, who also manages some other eight thirty G properties in Wallingford. And they have agreed to take this on. We do not have a signed agreement with them. But once that is finalized, I'm happy to provide that to staff for the records. If for some reason they're unable or unwilling to do that, then we will find another suitable third party to oversee this plan to make sure we we maintain the compliance. The, there are some calculations shown in here that are dated from two thousand and fourteen. I chose not to update those because it really would not provide any practical benefit, in my opinion, to update them to two thousand and twenty, being that we're probably not going to have these built and available for rent until sometime into two thousand and twenty one. So these will constantly, these these figures will constantly be updated. But we'll use the same formulas to calculate what the maximum rent can be at both the sixty percent and eighty percent levels. So we'll use the same formula that was outlined in the previous regulation or I'm sorry affordability plan, but with current updated figures.
Just so I'm clear, Mr. Weedman, the date doesn't drive the income level. You know, in the affordability plan, the twenty fourteen doesn't drive the income number, it's the current income number when you're looking to rent, is that correct?
Yes, yes, you are. The regulations call for it the most current or the 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 median income amount is based on the day the lease is signed. And that's how it was written into the affordability plan originally. And again, we did not modify that. So we're using that same calculation. And that's, it's a HUD calculation. So it's again, third party, not something that we create. So there's a third party process for that to happen as well. As I mentioned, we have thirty six units, eleven of which will be under the affordable program. Ten of those units will be two bedroom units and one will be a three bedroom unit. Again, trying to split the proportions equally between the different style and size of units. And I believe, I'm just going to flip through here really quickly, make sure I don't miss anything, but I believe that's the extent of the changes that were made to the affordability plan. Take a moment and I will show you first a, hopefully if my computer will recognize this. Let's try that one. Here is a rendering, in this case, it's building A. All the buildings look very similar, other than C again, which is elevated with garages under it. We tried very hard to put a combination of roof styles, hip roofs and gable roofs, raising the plate height of the middle units and putting the dormers there. And that's where we created the three story units. There's a third bedroom in this upper floor on the third floor here. It would allow us just a nice variety of of textures, of depths of building and so forth to to create something that I think will be attractive. So that is the only color rendering I have, but I do have for you the other black and white versions of the other buildings. Again, we just looked at building A. This eight unit building, building B right here is basically identical, but just two two units longer. And then if I flip to my next page, we have building C and D. Again, C showing the garages on the lower level here. Same style units up above, almost identical, except we did not do the three store, the three bedroom units in the upper floors of of either of these buildings. And this is building D, which is directly behind the gas station, again, a nine unit building.
Okay.
I think that's the extent. Again, if there's technical questions, Christopher is available. If there's anybody has any questions regarding drainage utilities or any of the design characteristics. And I'm happy to answer any other questions if they're already.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weedman. Again, before I go to commission members, I just ask if Mrs. Hand or Mr. Talbot, if either one of you have any questions or comments before I go to permission members. I'll start with Mrs. Hand.
Actually, I was going to suggest maybe start with Mr. Talbot, since he had comments and written comments and see if his written comments were addressed and everything.
Absolutely. Mr. Talbot, you're up.
Based on revisions that were received late last week in which most of, most of my comments were addressed, there are three areas though that I would at least like to bring up. The first one has to do with the designated common space area. I I've felt a little uncomfortable about expressing a strong opinion about whether this complies with the original R H O D regulation. And I would rely on the commission. I would guess at least some of you were were here when it was originally put together that you could make a decision as to whether what Mr. Weedman is proposing is open space meets the spirit of what was originally approved, that would be. Well, it does, it does, if you read the wording, does refer to a specific area, an area. And it does include language that would include things like passive uses such as picnic tables, engines, that sort of thing. You're not seeing that with this plan. So the commission really needs to determine whether that's what you want to see here too or not. The other, my other comment has to do with lighting. The revisions that we receive, they show some lighting in the south, I think it's the southwest corner, southwest lot. But it's referred at one point, one of them is, there's a reference to typical. So I don't know whether that means those are the only four lights that are parking lot lights that'll be on the property or not. But I think you should get more than a a typical description, know where all the street lights are going in this project. And there are no details in terms of height, type of light, that sort of thing. I think you do need that. The last thing has to do with the five parking spaces associated with with ninety Woodhouse Avenue. The revised plans that we received did show additional spaces, additional five spaces, I believe. However, there isn't anything on the plan that would indicate that they're dedicated to ninety Woodhouse Avenue. And I think that that's something that needs to be done. It was done on the last plan. You look at the deed for this property, it includes that provision. And my other concern about this is that you look at ninety Woodhouse Avenue, avenue, you'll see that other than these parking spaces, there are only about four parking space, four onsite parking, four, five onsite parking spaces. There are five from information I was able to get from the accessories. There are five one bedrooms apart, one bedroom apartments there with a parking requirement of almost nine parking spaces. But they need these parking spaces. And if they're taken away, the property requires eight or nine parking spaces. So if you eliminate these parking spaces from this property, in effect, you'd be allowing the creation of a of a of a nonconforming conformity in terms of parking where it doesn't exist. So I just think that on this plan, on the final plans, it needs to be very clear that five of those spaces that southwest, southwestern parking lot are dedicated for use by the ninety Woodhouse. That's that's the land.
All right, Mr. Weedman, would you like to address some of those comments?
Absolutely. Again, for the record, Bob Weedman from Sunwood Development. Absolutely. Again, for the record, Bob Weidman from Sunwood Development. Regarding the recreation areas, again, I think Tom brought up a valid point. Some of you may have been involved in this. Regulation creation early on, so maybe you might even know the history better than I of what the intent was. I feel like we have such a significant increase in. Green space compared to the previous application. That we have more than enough areas for picnic tables, benches and kids to run around and get exercise and do all the things that kids do. So I'll leave that to your judgment as to whether or not we're in compliance. Regarding the lighting, the only pole lighting we're proposing, and I think I may have said southeast corner, I. Stand corrected, Tom is right. It's a southwest corner. Those are the only locations that would have pole lights in the parking areas. I believe the lighting on the buildings themselves will be sufficient for the rest of the. Property. I don't have to provide those details or put a note on that 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 is in fact the case. Regarding the five parking spaces. The the deed that calls out an easement over this property that again was done between sort of family members. Reference five parking spaces and they were actually numbered. Based on the previously approved site plan, which again is no longer in existence or is not going to be built. So I did not want to try to. Suggest where these additional parking spaces would be, although it makes perfect sense that they'd be as close to number ninety as we can. And I also think from a common sense standpoint, this southwest parking lot is probably going to be used for overflow parking during holidays. And peak periods rather than the parking within what I'll call the main portion of the community. It just sort of makes sense that that's how it's going to function. So we're happy to assign specific spaces. But I do need to work that out with the property owner so that we can modify the easement to accommodate that. But again, we're happy to do that and I'm sure that will happen in its due course. And I believe all of Tom's comments, I hope I answered them all correctly.
Yes, just a quick comment. As far as the lighting, that lighting, the. Two pole lights that you have, those are designated on the plans, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, at this point in time, I'd open it up to any questions from commission members, starting with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I guess my first question would be through you to Mr. Weiderman. What is the target market for this building? Is it age restrictive families? You've mentioned children several times. Is it? Is it not going to be a destructive? Is it going to be encouraged for young families?
I think it'd be a combination. I think my my target market quite honestly is. People that are unsatisfied with their current apartment living, maybe. Units that are small or don't have outdoor space, don't have private entrances. And I think that will fall into people, you know, young professionals, professional working, obviously the convenience to. Want as much as we all like everybody to drop, jump on the trains. All hop in our car and get on ninety one and head north or south. So I think that reality is that's probably one of it. The fact that we have a couple of three unit buildings, I'd assume there'll be some family. Members there as well. We're trying to be very diverse, but there's not any one particular. Your market.
All right, thank you. Following up on the comments from Mr. Talbot. When I look at the plan and the revision plans and the early plans, I too am probably concerned about the parking. You're you're exceeding our requirements, I think, by one space because our requirements are. Eighty two and you're providing eighty three and I I was concerned about the north, excuse me, southwest parking lot. And I until you started talking, I forgot that was to support ninety Woodhouse. But as I look at the parking in front of the buildings, I'm not sure there's. Sufficient and and I'll give you two two examples. One, you have four handicap parking spots out of the total of eighty two spaces. And one of them is in the southwest corner, which really doesn't support your project. It looks like it supports ninety Woodhouse. And there's no, there's no handicap in front of C, but that's those are the buildings with the garage. I think handicap parking is a is a larger issue, but if it's not going to go for an older age restricted housing. Then you you think you complied with the handicap requirement. The second follow up question to that would be the southwest. Is where you're thinking overflow and I I could tell you, you know, looking at parking for residential, the overflow is going to be daily. It's not, I I don't know if there's enough parking here for someone to have a birthday party or a family gathering because. It parking appears to be tight because there's only one extra spot. So I, you know. I think it's a good plan, better than what we approved in fourteen, but I I'm always, you know, I'm always thinking that there's. You're right, we're still a automobile based society. I don't know if you're providing enough parking. That's kind of a comment question.
And if you could please address that, Mr. Weiderman.
Yeah, I um, Tom, Tom raised that same question and I apologize. The plans. Submitted with your sets did show a handicap space in this overflow parking area. If you'll notice now, there are two located in the. So we did relocate that at Tom's suggestion to get more centralized. I had actually thought that maybe we have excess parking, so we make this. Whether or not we have too much or not. The one I will will make, and this has been historically in Wallingford that. We're not allowed to count this parking space in front of a garage. You either count the base in the garage or the. The garage, but not both. Practical matters, I'm still of the opinion that people will use these two spaces. One in the garage and one in front of these units, building C. Oh, in my mind, I still think there are nine additional spaces available for parking. But again, from a regulation standpoint where you're not counting those.
Gotcha. If you could make an adjustment on your on the screen we're looking at. The two spaces on the northern driveway that are parallel, what what are they? Were they there originally or what's the what's the thinking there?
Yep. So originally there were two spaces there. Again, your plan shows two from the original submission. There's actually three here now. This was in order to comply to try to quite honestly squeeze in a couple more spaces to accommodate what we need to do for number ninety. I did not want to be out of. Terms with the regulations. So we kind of hunted around for a couple of locations. There is a mailbox location right here. Gotcha. Is that this is going to allow someone to pull in here, grab their mail, either leaving or home from work if they want to stop and get that rather than walking back to this location.
Okay. One one additional question for you because it is New England. I know it is July. Forgive me, can you show me the snow shelf or where the snow will be stored, you know, in the winter? I didn't see it on the plan version I have.
Yes, and we still do not have that designated. You know, what I envision is no storage up in the northern end of this lot. Everybody's going to plow snow. As far north as they can into these areas and then turn around and plow south, depositing some here. Probably a large amount will be stored in this island between buildings A and C. This sort of be. Parcelled out around different areas of the site. Obviously, one of the factors obviously is always. Are we getting back to back multiple storms and and very little melting in between? Or are we getting nicely space storms where we get some snowmelt? I can scroll down and obviously anytime we get into multifamily townhouse neighborhoods, we do. I've plowed a lot of these personally and I I know they can be a real bearer to figure out where to pile snow and there may be times that we're going to have to just load it out of here. But we will, you know, try again to place in these locations and in the four corners of the the front lot here. Try to always be aware of of not, you know, blocking visibility, certainly not out, especially by the street and so forth. But it will be sort of spread around those green space areas as best we can.
Knowing you've been before this commission before, can the final plans reflect a snow shelf area? As a condition of approval?
I'm happy to do that. I've often had this conversation with our public works department and said, do your drivers ever know where the snow storage shelves are? Into the cul-de-sacs. But you know, we can show them, but Mr. Fitzsimmons, to be honest with you, they're going to use their their best judgment on which direction it makes sense to plow. If you'd like me to locate areas that are generally appropriate, I'm happy to put those on there. I can't tell you, I'm going to get them to put the snow there.
Agree, I agree. It's a, it's a, it's a tough issue, but I think because. When you're looking at your plan and and look at the parking, there's not a lot of extra space. So you don't want, you don't want to lose a space because it snows there. You know what I mean? It it's, I've got challenges with my own driveway and my son who's now doing my driveway. And it is an issue. You need every square inch of pavement in the winter. So I I agree the reality, but it'd be nice if we could at least show it on the plan. So. Mr. Chairman, question through to you. I don't know if you, do you want to come back to the. Issue of the recreation area raised by Mr. Talbot or should I cover that now?
No, I think you have your questions now, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If you would ask those questions now, I think that would be appropriate.
All right, I I would say, as I said earlier, I do think this is a better plan than the original approval because I do like the breakup of the buildings. I I tend to agree with Mr. Talbot that. I'd like to see the minimum area of fifteen hundred square feet set aside for. Passive recreation, sitting picnic areas, benches, you know, it is, it's a, there's a lot of green space. So it might be something as simple as just designating, you know, the the area either with. Picnic tables or or something. I I guess I always envisioned that versus just a sea of apartments and cars. So I envisioned it early on that it would always include some some setup for that. So that would be my opinion.
Mr. Weiderman, perhaps if you could. Giving Mr. Fitzsimmons comments, if you could perhaps show us where that area may be appropriate on your plans.
Yeah, I just scrolled up. We're we're looking at the middle of the project right now between the four buildings and my first thought is this area. There is the. An existing sanitary sewer line that runs down through the parking lot and turns here down to the top of the property. So this area would probably be the most appropriate to have something that, you know, with removable benches and picnic table. Be removed if they ever had to access the sewer line, do a little bit of planting in this area. I think there's a barrier to probably just in this one area, probably more than qualify or comply with the regulation. And we'll still can maintain these areas behind the buildings as well.
Nice.
But we could do a little bit of planting here and and probably I I'd probably add a couple of shade trees. So you're not sitting out there this time of year baking, sitting on a picnic table. And nobody using them.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to reiterate Mr. Fitzsimmons comments about the recreation area. I think that's a perfect plan. I I do think that, you know, the overall. Much greater size than the original fifteen hundred is, you know, a real good thing. Setting aside that special area, I think. You know, will be a nice addition. And you know, we talked talked about the parking. I think the parking is fine. But but maybe I missed it. You know, I'm just wondering why those, you know, five spaces are, you know, there's, there was, you know, an easement to. To allow those five spaces for ninety Woodhouse. You know, what what was the, you know, reason for that? Was that part of the purchase? Agreement for the property years ago or?
Mr. Wait a minute, if you could please address those comments or that question if you would.
Yeah, certainly. So the only point I disagree with Tom on is whether or not we are creating a nonconformity. There's nothing that I'm aware of. That shows a number ninety, actually, you're just seeing the edge of the building here. This is the outline of the building. There are five parking spaces directly off a wood house that park in the basically in the front yard of this building. Because these properties were both owned by the same family and there's some common ownership, but not everyone in the family. That owns one parcel owns the other parcel. But Mr. Hearn, Donnie Hearn had owned this property for fifty or seventy years. I mean, a long, long time. I think he just always allowed parking to take place here. And I think they just decided when they did the site plan. For the apartment building that they wanted to formalize that agreement so that number ninety could utilize the five spaces in this area. That they had historically used, even though there was never any formal agreement between the property owners at that time. It was all family, so it just made sense. So what we're looking at quite honestly, and it sort of goes back to what Mr. Fitzsimmons said. Is we're not going to designate this first space just because if there ever is a little bit of snow overflow into this, I don't want to cut off one space. That is designated for ninety. So my thinking is probably the next five spaces would be set aside for number ninety. They actually have a little walkway that actually travels down to this parking area. That's a little closer to their, the parking is actually closer to the property line now. It'll be pushed back and there'll be some more green area between our parking and their property line. But I think I think that's an appropriate place to do it. And again, I I think we still are in compliance with the regulations. For the other parking and these would be the the least necessary parking space or at least least used. For the the residents of our community.
So so what you're saying is there would be a physical sign or something saying. These are, you know, reserved spots and you cannot use them.
Yes, typically what we'll do in all our communities would designate one space relatively close to a unit for. Their everyday parking and then the rest be listed as visitor slash overflow parking. So these four spaces or five spaces rather would also be designated. And it could just be by a number, not saying necessarily for number ninety, but just reserve numbers one through five here and then the other ones being. Visitor parking are available.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I I still think the parking is okay with that. Thank you. I'll set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Buenoy.
I have no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monoracho.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Heine.
I think everyone stole my thunder so far, so I do not have any further questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allison. I'm not going to break tradition now, Mr. Chairman. No comments. Thank you. And Mrs. Hand, I believe you'd like to make some comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of things. And I just wanted like. To go over a couple of things generally, and I agreed with all of Tom's comments. So I I just, I think, I do think. Those should be made conditions of approval. I just wanted to note a couple of things and then I had a couple of questions, although Mr. Weidman and I talked last week, so he addressed most of them. So I do want to point out, and I I'm not pointing this out as an issue, but I do want to point out that there is. Although the number of units is staying the same, there is a significant increase in the number of bedrooms because these are going, the original was. Single bedroom units and we're going to two and a few three bedroom units. So that is, that does impact the parking requirements. So that is why they had, I think there's. A well, a variety of, yeah, so some of the the changes to the design, which I think is are a good thing. But there is an increase in the parking requirement because more bedroom units require more parking. So that is sort of. The the balance here. I do believe in, I believe that a. Affordable housing is important and I think that it's important that we provide a mix in the type of units to serve. Different needs of of different members of the community. So I I. Like I said, I'm not raising this as a concern. I just wanted to point it out to the commission because I do think. We end up densifying the site in some ways a little bit in order to address those parking needs. And I also, I'm, I think that. Recreation space designation is really important because of that, because you're more likely to end up with with some families. So I think that's important and that should be a condition of approval. I think we go from around thirty six bedrooms to, I think it was around seventy something, but I. Mr. Weidman could probably give me the exact number. And then in terms of the affordability plan, I just wanted to suggest a condition of approval. That Mr. Weidman touched on my or answered my questions, but just that the final affordability plan. Including the designated oversight entity should be approved by the town planner, approved and verified by. As compliant by the town planner prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. So that's just a suggested condition. And DOT approval should be a condition of approval. Mr. Weidman touched on that already. And then the response from Mr. Weidman should also be conditions of approval. And then I have two questions. One is, we had engineering comments and I'm wondering whether or not anybody spoke with engineering and whether or not those have been addressed, or I just want to make sure that they can be addressed. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Giuliano or Mr. Weidman wants to answer that, but I just want to make sure they can be addressed and suggest that they be made a condition. And then my other question is, um, some commissioners who were on the commission the last, for the last approval, and I do want to say, I, I'm, I'm really pleased. I think, I think in a lot of ways, um, this is an improvement to the, the previous project. But one of, you might remember that, an issue that came up a lot during the last approval was what the view from the street would be like of the building. Originally, it was only one building. It was three stories. Um, and so we have the architecturals provided, but I know, for example, unit D and unit B, sorry, I, my, my eyesight's not what it once was. The back of those units are what will be visible kind of from the road. And we don't have architecturals for those, so I was hoping Mr. Weidman could maybe just give us a sense of what that will look like. Will it be consistent with the front, similar materials, that sort of thing? Just, just kind of maybe answer that for me. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Mr. Weiderman, if you'd please address the comments from our town planner, if you would, please.
Sure. I, I'm going to defer to Christopher to just comment on town engineers' comments. I believe they've been addressed, but I'll let him just confirm that when I'm done. Let me see, what were the, oh, bedroom count. Seventy-six units is what we're currently, I'm sorry, seventy-six bedrooms is what we're currently showing. Thirty-two two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units. The, as you can see, we've, we've tried to consider some landscaping. These are probably going to be our reviety or something relatively tall to break up the, the mass of the back of these buildings. Uh, as Casey pointed out, um, these are two-story buildings. Where originally, uh, this one large building was three stories. So we've tried to downplay that and reduce the size. We're also, just from a technical construction standpoint, these are not going to have basements. They're going to have slabs on grade. And that allows us to get the building actually in the ground a little bit lower, just one step up from outside into these units rather than the thickness of your floor system. So it does get the building just a little bit shorter than a typical wood-framed floor system. And there's fencing currently around the back of the three sides of the gas station. And we will either be working with that property in order to replace that or improve upon it or add our own fence and landscaping in those areas also to, again, try to minimize. I, I do appreciate that, you know, from the street, you may have some views of the back of these buildings. So we're going to need to do as best we can, be creative to come up with some brace in our siding and different colors and, and trim details. I quite honestly don't want to place a lot of stone or something expensive on those elevations, but we, we will do our best to make them as attractive as we can, knowing how visible they are. And it's, excuse me, quite honestly, what you see as you drive in, and I consider this to be sort of our main entrance. So I think the, the views as you drive in this property is, is really critical of how these two buildings in particular, the backsides of those look. So, um, we're, we're going to take good care to get this right.
Thank you.
Mr. Weid, does that address your comments, Mrs. Hand?
Yeah, yeah. And I just wanted to add one more condition that, that the written responses from Mr. Weidman should probably be included as conditions, as a condition.
Hey, I guess, Mr. Weidman, I have a question for you. Now, I noticed on, I guess it's building B, you have the, the landscaping. And I think on your plans, you showed them as arbor vitae, I think, and they were going in at least twelve feet, if I read the plans correctly. And I certainly may not have, but if I'm looking at building C, you mentioned there's a fence there. What type of fence there is on that property line? And why would you not want to put, you know, plantings, arbor vitae's much like you did on building B on the back of building D?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with you. From, you know, obviously the visibility from our units to the backyard here is not a negative. The views from the backyard of building D towards the gas station is not the most attractive. So we, we've shown kind of the minimum plantings required per your regulations, but I would anticipate that we're going to put significantly more plantings than are shown here. The fence is a chain link fence with the privacy slats in it, and it's not terribly attractive. So I, I would envision it as being a vinyl or wood fence of some sort. Six feet tall, which will, will give you privacy in the grass area into the first floor. Second floor is still going to be overlooking this space, which is why I'd probably also add at least some, some amount of landscaping, plantings that'll get relatively tall in that area. And I think our revieties are probably the most appropriate.
I, I guess, would you agreeable then to put the plantings behind building B very similar to what that are behind building B? Because again, as you mentioned, while there's the six-foot vinyl fence, whatever, but I think we all agree that, you know, looking on the back of a gas station, even with a six-foot fence is probably not the most attractive, you know, for, for residential. So again, you put the plantings behind B, it would, in my mind, would seem appropriate or even logical to put them also very similar behind building D.
Yeah, I, I agree. I have no objection adding those plants in that location.
Okay. And again, I know there was a lot of talk about easements, uh, but I'm looking at the memo, uh, July ninth of twenty twenty from our, uh, town engineer talked about an easement, you know, for the proposed drive in favor of the, again, I'm slaughtering the name, uh, wouldn't be appropriate. Again, has that been addressed?
I, I may ask Christopher to talk about this from a technical standpoint again, and I, and I still want him to respond about the other comments from the town engineer. But it's my understanding that there is not a formal easement here because this was a paper street. That every property owner along this paper street that ran through this property had certain rights. When the property was deeded to Ahern, um, those rights did not get extinguished. So they still have the same rights to access this as they currently do and have for years. So there's not a formal easement, um, but there are, they have rights just for the, the fact that they've been using it for a period of time. And we have no intention of stopping that use. As you can see, we've left the curb cuts, done some little additional landscaping in these areas. And this will be part of our entrance way that we're going to maintain for them. So they'll have probably a nicer entrance. Right now, this is just sort of an overgrown gravel area that goes into their property.
Again, Mrs. Hand, I understand, I certainly realize you can't, uh, kind of speak for the, the town engineer, but, uh, from the representations or comments made by Mr. Weidman concerning the lack of need for an easement, would you, would you concur with that?
I, I think that's more of a legal question. I'm not sure how to answer that.
Excuse me, if we could let Mrs. Hand finish, please.
Sorry. I, I think as long as they have some sort of legal perpetual right to access, that's what we're looking for.
And again, Mr. Weiderman, you've indicated that is the case.
Yes, I, I was just going to suggest that Christopher Giuliano just commented as a licensed land surveyor. He can probably explain exactly what rights they have better than if he's available.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me. Yes, you can. Okay. So for the record, Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor, professional engineer. Basically, I was involved in the project in two thousand and twelve, so I'm very familiar with this property. And the deeds going back to the time when Catherine Street and Edward Street, which is actually the south entrance, were created. Obviously, there were town roads going through from Woodhouse to Florence Ave. When those roads were not used, not built upon, um, the rights got deeded to various parties subject to the use by any budding property owner, which is typical for any road that's created and then discontinued or abandoned. Basically, the people who had frontage on that road or access or used it continue to have access. So they, the deed that eventually made it into Donnie Ahern and then Fairway Apartments LLC continues to be subject to the rights of others to use these paper streets for access. Similar to on our eastern side, our neighbor who appears to be landlocked, he has access on the continuation of Catton Street out to Florence. So, yep, so basically this second piece where Bob just kind of zoomed by. So even though it's technically Catherine Street that goes all the way out to Florence is owned by Fairway Apartments LLC, soon to be owned by Sunwood, that landlocked property has the right to continue to use and build a driveway to get to Florence Street. So we cannot extinguish those rights. Now, that all being said, if it's a simple matter to make the town engineer happy and create an easement for, uh, the person at fifty-two to legitimize the part, the access, I don't see what the problem is. It would probably make things a little bit easier because I believe the access or their, their right to access is in our deed. And I'm not a hundred percent sure if it is in their deed, to be honest. So this would actually be a way to get it into their chain of title, if we do create an easement.
So then you would not have a, Mr. Weidman, I guess, would you agree with your, with your representative that you would not have an issue with that?
Yes, again, I'd be happy to do that, Chris. I think it's most appropriate.
Thank you. And then I guess I just have one last comment. Early on in your presentation, you mentioned that you had some communication from the Connecticut DOT. You know, is, is noted in our correspondence. We had a letter from the DOT, April sixteenth of twenty twenty. You mentioned you've had some receipt, but if we were to look to approve this application, I think that we would want to, you know, reference, make, uh, make any approval condition upon, you know, the comments made in the April sixteenth, twenty twenty. Again, it appears that you've indicated you have communication from the DOT that they've been addressed, but as we don't have that, to verify that. So with that, I, I guess I would bring it back to Mr. Talbot. I know Mrs. Hand had some comments as far as potential, uh, conditions on the application. I believe Mr. Talbot may have some, or like to clarify some of the possible conditions for this application, should the commission decide to approve it. So with that, I'll turn this over to, uh, Mr. Talbot.
So far, in, in addition to what you have in your written motion, you can eliminate comments from the Fire Marshal because the Fire Marshal had no comments. But in terms of additional, uh, conditions, I think, uh, first of all, uh, you may want to require that the affordable units that were described earlier be shown on the final site plan. They're, they're, they're nowhere to be found. Another condition would be that parking spaces for ninety Woodhouse Avenue to be designate, clearly designated on the final site plan. What I have as number eight would be lighting details to be shown on the plan. Nine would be provision of snowshelves on the final plan. Number ten would be, would include the provision of a fifteen hundred square foot common open space area as discussed. Number eleven, uh, the town planners' conditions regarding final ability, final ability for affordability plan to be approved by the planning office prior to the issuance of a, of any certificate of occupancy. In addition, could include the written responses from Mr. Weidman. My comments dated seven, seven, twenty. Addition to that, we could condition an action based on a creation of a formal easement for parking for fifty-two Woodhouses, Woodhouse Avenue as discussed. And we could also make it a condition, uh, we could include the comments from the DOT from April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty concerning, uh, access onto Woodhouse Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. I guess at this point in time, uh, I'd ask if any, uh, commission members have any final questions, any final comments on this application? I see, I believe none do. At this point in time, uh, again, this is not a public hearing, but we do for the public opportunity to speak on applications. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this application? If you, uh, if there are, please, uh, go to the, uh, comment bubble, uh, on the upper right of the, uh, of the screen. And I'll wait just a moment to see if anybody would like to comment. Okay, seeing none, uh, I would, uh, I guess bring this back to the applicant if he would like to make any, uh, any further comments on the application or make any comments as far as some of the conditions that are, uh, have been possibly discussed.
Yes, again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Bob Weidman, Jr. No, I think the, the comments are all very appropriate. I don't have any concerns with any of the conditions that Tom just outlined. I think the feedback from commissioners has been very helpful. I think we've maybe made a few improvements to, to our plan. So I, I don't have any objection to what's been discussed. Just for record keeping only because I see it on my screen and, um, assuming you see it also. But it looks like there are five people that may have posted comments. So I don't know if there are questions there that you have not seen yet. I just don't want to exclude anyone if they want to make a, have a question or something.
Oh, no, the, uh, I want to, actually, Mr. Weiderman, there are six comments. Five of the comments were for the, uh, prior application. And the sixth comment was, uh, uh, just, uh, Mrs. Hand indicated that she would like to, uh, make some comments, which she has done. So, uh, looking at the chat screen, I think we're all squared away.
Okay, thank you. And, and for that.
For pointing that out to me.
I, I'm all set. I just want to make sure we've got everybody's questions answered before we, um, stop speaking. So with that, I think I am done. And, um, uh, I thank and I hope you give it proper consideration and I think we made a good project. I believe we comply with all the regulations and I look forward to building a nice, nice project in town. Thank you again for everyone.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Weidman. I guess at this point in time, seeing that there's no further comments from any commission members and members of staff, and I believe I'm correct, uh, at this point in time, I would entertain a, uh, motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application two oh four dash two zero. Site plan for Sunwood Development to construct thirty-six dwelling units in four buildings on three point one nine acres at eighty-eight and portions of fifty-two Woodhouse Ave, as shown on plans entitled Site Layout Plan, Proposed Residential Development, Land of Fairway Apartments LLC, eighty-eight Woodhouse Ave, Wainford, Connecticut, dated three twenty-three twenty, revised to seven ten twenty, subject to comments in a letter from Thomas Talbot Planner to Sunwood Development dated six twenty-nine twenty as applicable. Comments and recommended conditions of approval in inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water Source Division, to Thomas Talbot Planner dated seven eight twenty. Comments of Allison Kapachinsky, Town Engineer to Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission dated four seventeen twenty and five twenty-seven twenty. Sediment and erosion control bond to be set by town planner and posted before commencement of work. Final plan with a snow shovel, uh, shown on plans. Comments as represented from Robert Weidman memo to Thomas Talbot Planner dated seven seven. Comments as represented from Robert Weederman Memo to Thomas Talbot Planner dated seven seven twenty. Final DOT approval, plantings to be included behind building E for screening. Final plans show, representing affordable units on plan. Final plan for a park designated parking space for unit ninety. Final plans representing a hundred and fifteen hundred square foot open space on plans. A formal easement for parking at fifty-two Woodhouse Ave. And what else? I think that was it.
If you could just wait, Mr. Vanoyd, for a moment. Static here. Also, there was a, also, also, there was a recommendation for lighting details to be shown on the plans.
There was also-
So noted.
But, go ahead.
That the final affordability plan should be approved by the town planner prior to-
Yes, I'm sorry. Final affordability plan to be verified and approved by the town planner before issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Just to clarify, the parking spaces for ninety Woodhouse Avenue are to be designated on this final-
Yes. Okay, we have a motion on the application. Are there any comments on the, on the motion? Mr. Fitzsimmons, I think we're getting feedback on your phone.
Oh, I like a second.
I have a second, second on the motion by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Vanoyd.
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The application's been approved. Gentlemen, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And just to remind you, you need to take back control of the screen unless you guys want to watch my screen for the rest of your meeting.
I think you have to exit out of it.
Do I? If I, if I just leave, it'll go back to you?
I believe so. Trying it, yes. If you would leave, let's just see, Mr. Weederman. Seeing how it took me five minutes to get on.
Stop sharing screen. There we go.
Ah, there we go. Good.
I think you're back in business. So I'm going to check out. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, this brings us now back to item number three on our agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit for TC Realty LLC at one twenty-two Center Street. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please read the legal notice for four zero five dash twenty and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, four zero five dash, special permit for TC Realty LLC to permit two second, two second floor apartments in existing structure at one twenty-two Center Street. Zone, town, suburban district. We have interdepartmental referral dated May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, signed by the fire marshal. And of course, fine state June sixteenth, two thousand twenty, signed by Thomas Talbot. We have an interdepartmental referral dated May eighteen, two thousand twenty, signed by the fire marshal. We have some correspondence dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, Tom Talbot, town planner from Steven Lazarus. We have correspondence, Planning Zoning Commission from Suttonwood, two thousand twenty. We have correspondence dated July eighth, two thousand twenty, to Thomas Talbot, town planner, Stephen Lazarus. Plan dated seven nine, two thousand twenty. And we have an inner office memorandum to Tom Talbot, acting town planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated July ninth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant and/or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Lazarus. I'm an architect with Lazarus and Sargent here in Wallingford. I'm representing Anthony Casa Bianca, who is the owner of the property. Can you show the site plan that, that is on the public record?
No, you're gonna have to do that. No, you're gonna have to do that. I believe Mr. Talbot asked everybody to be able to put their plans up.
It would be nice if I could, or if I got that request, but I did not. So you cannot show anything?
No. No, again, that's, I believe Mr. Talbot requested everybody to do that. Okay, I apologize. He indicated he didn't think he asked you.
Okay, so, so with that liability, let me give you some background on the project. And in fact, maybe we're better off without drawings. You all are familiar with the property. It is Wallingford Lamp and Shade and the Hubcap on the first floor, two commercial properties. Above those properties, there is a space which has been unoccupied for years and it has a kind of speckled past as a legal illegal apartment and is technically currently, its, its use is seen as being office use. As we all know, the use of second floor spaces in downtown Wallingford for residents, this is a very desirable use. And the owner appropriately decided that that would be the best use for his property. Because the new town center regulations require a change of use, when a change of use from any use to residential takes place, the entire site needs to be brought up to, brought into compliance with the current parking regulations. And, and then there are elaborate, there's elaborate formulas for, for ways that those parking regulations might be reduced. And so in a way, this property and this project has become a kind of acid test for how well the new regulations can be applied to an existing very, very difficult and very tight situation. And so with that, I'd like to talk about the parking requirements, which really drive the project. The parking requirements by the Newtown Center Regulations total fifteen point seven spaces. Right now, there really legitimately isn't a single designated parking space on the property. I believe that the town's records indicate that there are two or three spaces back there, but it really is a kind of a poorly defined space. So starting with that, we looked at the reduction in parking requirement regulations. And the first thing that we did was because there are mixed uses in these buildings, or there will be especially when we're done, there's a parking reduction of two and a half spaces that we can use because of shared mixed use kind of designations for those spaces. We also took advantage of a bicycle rack reduction. We also took advantage of designating one space to be used by the public. And then perhaps the biggest one, we are taking advantage of a fee in lieu of spaces. We are short eight parking spaces, even with the other reductions. And so it's our intention for the owner to pay for those eight parking spaces. I believe the, the number is three thousand dollars a space. So it would be twenty-four thousand dollars, which would go into a designated downtown parking improvement fund, which I think is actually kind of exciting. The, the final number of parking spaces which are required as a result of all of those reductions is four. And the regulations require that that is the minimum that we can provide on the site, specifically because you are required to provide the, all of the parking that the apartments, that residences need. And that's four spaces for two two-bedroom apartments. So that's what we show on our site plan, four parking spaces. And those parking spaces are, are hard-won parking spaces. We got those parking spaces by doing things as extreme as taking a Bilco door out, filling that area with crushed stone and putting pervious pavers on top of them. And by doing that, we managed to get two parking spaces right adjacent to the entrance to the apartments. And we have two other parking spaces on the site and we have a screened area for the dumpster. And so all of this is done in a space that's, that's, that's very tight and very difficult. The other thing that we're doing in order to improve the general kind of approach to parking in this area is that we're doing some things in collaboration with the, the adjacent site, which is owned by the same owner. We are, we have agreed that it makes sense to have an access easement through the adjoining corner property so that should the properties be owned by different individuals in the future, that access to the space behind the Wallingford Lamp and Hubcap could be retained. And we're also suggesting that, again, in a cooperative effort, that the property on the corner have the access lanes changed to one way so that the spaces which are tight, frankly, on both properties will work a little bit better. So this frankly is an exercise in taking the idiosyncrasies which are rife downtown and making the best that we possibly can of them. The apartments themselves are, I, I think the technical term would be huge. We have two two-bedroom apartments. They're both about twelve hundred square feet. That is just the nature of that building. We do not want to disturb the windows on the front of that building. In fact, we're really actually quite, we're still proud of what that building looks like. That building was probably the first, or I'm virtually certain it was the first restoration project that WCI had anything to do with. It's a cast iron facade and it was very carefully restored and very beautifully painted. The building itself is almost the definition of the new facade standards. It has clear divisions, separations between the first and second floor, differences in windows between the first and second floor. It has steps in the facade that demonstrate and celebrate those differences between the first and second floor. It's actually a beautiful building. And I'm delighted to say that we're doing this work with absolutely no change in the way that building looks on the front. In fact, all of the change that takes place will really be in the back. And I know we all know that the back of that building could, could use the improvement. And in fact, one of the things that's really nice about doing those improvements in the back is it's driven really by the market. There will be an entrance to one or two apartments in the back and that needs to be cleaned up way beyond. It can no longer appear to be the back end of a commercial project as it looks right now. So that's essentially what we're doing. I, I probably have to thank you for making this into an essay question answer instead of a look at drawings. But that's, that's, that's the project in a nutshell.
Hopefully that won't be the case with the next application. Commission members, I guess I'd go first. Mrs. Hand, do you have any, you know, questions or any comments on the application? I know there was a comment about the eight spaces and paying in lieu of parking. That is something, as far as setting that arrangement up, is that something that's still, that the town council needs to put in place? Or am I incorrect?
Yeah, I have a meeting, I haven't talked to some internal staff about that. And I have a meeting with the town attorney next week about setting that up. So we should have that in place, I'm hoping, before I leave.
Do you have any other comments that you'd like to make on the application?
Just one comment, one question. The question is, oh, and if, if you'd like, I think I could post the, the plan, if you want to.
Oh, yes, absolutely, if you would. Thank you.
I would, I would just need you to make me a-
I'm gonna take you a presenter. One moment.
Thank you. And don't go away before the next presentation, please.
Hey, Mrs. Hand, it's coming at you.
Okay. Did that work?
Yes, it did. How were you able to do that?
I, I had it open on my server from the attachments on the website.
Oh, so Mr. Lazarus could do that.
Not from his home with his iPad, without any preparation. I accept the sincere apology.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hand. If you continue.
Sure. So the question I have is the drive aisles, there's a one-way in and a one-way out. And I know Mr. Lazarus worked with me to kind of make that work because of those. And, and based on Mr. Talbot's comments too about the easements, because it involves two properties, the drive aisle in and the drive aisle out don't have dimensions. Do you know about how wide those are now? Are they at least twelve feet?
Oh, yes, they're, they're more like, is there more like, I think they're more like twenty or so on the one-way inside. And they vary with the, with the property line on the one-way outside. But they're not, you know, that's an existing condition and it actually works pretty well. You know, when you take a look at that, parking seems to work out all right.
Okay, so it, it, I mean, it looks like the closest point is between that one corner. I mean, we, we talked about this, that link, that one corner and the, I guess, northeasternmost parking space?
Yes.
And so that, but that looks like it's, it must be at least about twelve feet. Is that?
Yes, it is. It's, it's probably a little bit more than that.
Okay. And so to that end, my comment is, I'm, I'm glad that there's an easement being granted from the one, the corner property to the other. But I, I think you need to have cross easements because of that. Well, here, I guess I can point to it, can't I? Because of this section here. Can you see it?
Yes, and I would so welcome, I, I agree with you, that makes sense. And as a stipulation of approval, I would welcome that the easement arrangement needs to be acceptable to the town's legal department. That, that seems like a perfectly reasonable direction to go on.
Okay, and then those would be cross easements?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Any further comments from the, from the applicant?
No.
And Mr. Fitzsimmons, I think we're getting a buzz. Okay, it just, Mr. Talbot, do you have any comments?
No, except that in terms of the regulations, apparently the fee is a thousand dollars per space.
Yeah, I believe the fee is two thousand dollars per space. And you'd said, what, three?
I thought it was three. I appreciate-
We'd be very happy to accept that, but I think it's two thousand dollars, so we'll stick with-
That's good news tonight, and I thank you for that.
I'll thank Mr. Talbot. At this particular point in time, then I'd go to the commission members to see if any commission members have any questions for the applicant, beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
No comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
No comments.
Mr. Madarazzo.
No comments.
Mr. Vanoyd.
No comment.
And I just, looking at your plans, just to clarify, on, on your parking spaces, one, three, and fourth, that all is going to be now pavers, is that correct?
Those will be pervious pavers or spaced pavers so that we are not changing the stormwater distribution at all on the site.
Okay, and then the dumpster, that's going to be completely fenced in, is that correct? You know, the, at least three sides of it, obviously.
That's right.
Actually, I guess it would be four sides.
Well, it's against the building, so it's probably, yeah, it would be three sides.
That's great. I see that now. And Chairman, just for a second. And then the other comments were as far as just with one of the parking space number one in the dumpster that you need approval from the electric division on that. And I believe that, looking at what I have here, I believe that oh, you mentioned that just a comment, because I took a look at the, at the parking lot itself. And you mentioned there's no, other than those spaces that we talked about and one, three and four, and then another area where you, next to three, where you're putting in the pavers. There's no improvements to the parking lot right now? I know there's certainly a portion of it, which I guess a portion is 114 and a portion is 122. You mentioned that there was some consideration for improving the parking lot, but not at this time. When do you anticipate that may or may not occur?
I would say on the, it, it is likely to happen sooner rather than later. I am guilty of actually suggesting to the owner that making larger parking improvements right now because of some of the complications of the property lines would make this application more complicated, not less complicated. And so he is anxious to improve the, the kind of combined parking area. And I would predict it would happen in the next year.
Thank you. Any additional questions from commission members? I don't believe there are. Mrs. Hand, Mr. Talbot, I believe you're all squared away with any questions.
Could I just ask two more things quickly?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to touch on, I know Mr. Talbot made a comment about space number four and being able to back safely out of that. I just want to talk about that on the record briefly. Is it, so it's your representation that that can be safely backed out of?
Yes, frankly, every spot in this combined parking area requires careful driving. The, the beauty of space number four is that you can back up for 50 feet. In, in other locations, you're trying to back up on an angle right away. So actually, spot four is probably not the worst spot on the combined site.
Okay, okay, and then the pub, the space that's to be available to the public, I forgot, I wanted to mention that to the commission. That's what part of the, the new regs. And one of the things that we talked about is that is part of a special permit and the commission has discretion over whether or not to allow that. And what happens is in exchange for making a space publicly available, there is a, a bonus sort of towards the parking requirement that's provided. And that was to encourage provision of public parking spaces that can be utilized by people going to multiple sites and can be utilized in multiple situations. Typically, if there were only one public space being proposed, I would probably oppose it. In this case, it's adjacent to other parking spaces that potentially in the future, if there were a project to come in on the adjacent piece, could be made part of a larger, more cohesive, like string of public parking. So I think that's why it might be appropriate for the commission to consider. But I just wanted to sort of point that out so that the commission can think about that and consider it. And my question for Mr. Lazarus is how that will be designated. My suggestion would be some sort of sign, signage and perhaps striping of some.
Yeah, I, I think both of those are, are, are perfectly reasonable suggestions. And I would welcome a condition of approval being that the designation of that parking space needed to be acceptable to the planning office. I guess this is the first one, is it, is that true?
Yes, there was another, there is another approved plan that had that, that utilized that, but it hasn't come to fruition. So on the one on South Main Street, so they haven't actually done it yet. And that one, we were going to do signage.
Signage is, is quite acceptable. And if you even wanted the stipulation to be that since it is a new thing, you know, kind of collaborating with the planning office to make sure that the signage says what you want to say, whatever the designation is. In fact, you might, there is the possibility that you, you say that you want the stripes around that spike space to be the public parking green that seems to be around downtown for, you know, municipally controlled parking spaces. And that would certainly be something, I mean, that sounds like it might be a good idea. But we would, we would work with you. It could be a stipulation of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess at this point, I don't see any more comments from staff or from the, from the commission. I just make one final comment. I, I would, I guess compliment you, Mr. Lazarus, for taking, taking our regulations and apparently taking full advantage of, of our downtown, of our town center regulations with respect to parking and some of the options that are, that are available to make, you know, projects similar to this work. Let me say that I, I would entertain a, a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to have, oh, is this a public hearing?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanoy. Again, this is a, is a public hearing. Are there any members from the public that would, that would like to talk on the application? Certainly looking at the people that are on this call, I don't see any names that I don't recognize. And go to the chat bar and there's no one in the chat bar. So, and there's no callers, there's no one calling in. So if that, there does not appear to be any members from the public who would like to comment on the application. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And thank you, Mr. Vanoy, for reminding me of that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing of application 405-20, special permit for TC Realty LLC to permit two, two second floor apartments in an existing structure at 122 Center Street Zone Town Center District.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. Voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Monarazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Vanoy?
Yes.
And I vote yes now. Mr., Mr. Vanoy or any other commission members that would like to make a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 405-20, a special permit for TC Realty LLC to permit two second floor apartments in an existing structure at 122 Center Street, as shown on plans entitled Apartment Conversion 122 to 128 Center Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated 4/30/20, revised to July 9/20. Subject to comments from, from Thomas Talbot Planner to TC Realty LLC dated 6/16/20 as applicable. Comments and recommended conditions of approval and inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, to Thomas Talbot Planning Planner dated 7/9/20. Comments of Allison Kapitschinsky, Town Engineer, to Planning and Zoning Commission dated 6/30/2020. Comments from Fire Marshal dated 6/10/20. Final plans will have previous papers represented. Dumpster will be screened, designation of parking spots and appropriate signage to be acceptable by Planning Department. And, Mr. Chairman, do I have to say anything about $2,000 per parking space?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I think you also, there was perhaps a recommendation on the, on the cross easements being reviewed by the, by the town planner.
Okay, recommendation of the cross easements to be approved by the planning department.
Thank you. We have a, is there any additions? Comments on the, on the motion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Monarazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Vanoy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the application's been approved. Moving on. Well, I think I would thank Mrs. Hand for helping you out here.
I appreciate it too.
Moving down, we're going to item number, number six, new business. It's a site plan for VD Natale at 382 Center Street. Again, Mr. Monarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the records.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence dated June 29, 2020, to Vincenzo Di Natale from Thomas Talbot. We have corresponding, correspondence memo, Planning and Zoning Commission from Department of Engineering, dated June 30, 2020. We have an inter-office memorandum from town Talbot, at the town planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated July 2, 2020, in June and two.
Thank you, Mr. Monarazzo. I, I guess I'd ask, Mrs. Hand, are you prepared to perhaps assist the applicant?
Yep, just give me one second.
Okay, so with that, if the applicant or its representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Hello, my name's Stephen Lazarus. I'm an architect with Lazarus and Sargent. I'm here with Vincenzo Di Natale, the owner of the property. And on the screen now, thank you, Mrs. Hand, is the site plan for this project. The project is based upon a very simple concept that we're reducing the degree of nonconformity on the site. I don't think there's anyone in town who is delighted with the way this property looks now. And there's been a tremendously long path toward trying to find an acceptable way forward for this property. And we, we hope that we finally have come upon that. When I say we want to reduce the degree of nonconformity, the, the record for this property is a one bedroom and a two bedroom residence. And so we are retaining the, that designation as a one and two bedroom residence. We're making essentially two townhouses next to each other. And the way that we're reducing the degree of nonconformity is by generally reducing the area and the footprint. The footprint most dramatically is reduced. The current footprint is 1,320 square feet. And the new building footprint, including a cantilevered second floor, is just over 1,000 square feet. So it's, it's pushing a 30, 25 or 30% reduction in the footprint. And a lot of effort has been made to make this into a nicer place to live than it ever has been. The first floor is recessed in order to make it kind of a gesture of a private space to make the, the occupancy of this floor, of this, of this area just nicer. We're also making the first floor up several stairs higher than the sidewalk so that there's just a little bit of privacy gained by that elevation. So the, the two townhouses, we're excited about. We think they're, they're going to be really nice in that location. And again, they are two bedroom and one bedroom. The impact on the site is more limited. It's an incredibly tight site, as you can see from the site plan in front of you. There are currently two parking spaces. We're going to retain two parking spaces and we're going to create a, a small area for some dumpsters. And that's essentially all that we can do while creating a little lawn area to have there be some amenity for this property. One of the things, by the way, that we did is to take advantage of what, what we consider the nicer side of this property. The windows and the orientation of these two units is really toward Wallace. It's not toward the parking space behind to the west where there's the, the kind of service entrance road to the parking area. There are actually no windows on that backside. And some of that, interestingly enough, is because of their building code requirements, which I'm probably going to bore you about. Nobody's falling asleep yet, but when you're building on a property line, you really need to respect fire separations. And so even if there's nothing immediately on the other side of the property line, there could be in the future. And so that makes windows a problem in a location like that. So the how, the, the two units are very specifically designed for the, this really challenging, challenging site. And that's where up to, I, Vincenzo, do you want to add something?
Thank you for your comments and good evening, members of the commission and good evening, Mrs. Hand. I think just to reiterate that, you know, it is a.
Just please, Mr. Di Natale, just please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is, my name is Vincenzo Di Natale, 8 Taylor Lane in Wallingford.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate what Stephen had mentioned about the site, it's, it's a tight site. So we're really, we're, our hands are sort of tied, what we can, can do to make improvements. I think the, the decrease in the building footprint was a big step and allowed for increasing a little bit of a lawn area there, which actually would kind of match what was developed on the northern side of the property where there's a lawn area beside the building. So again, we're just working with a really tight site and we thought this was the best we could do with what we had to work with.
Okay, thank you. Any, first of all, I guess either Mrs. Mrs. Hand or Mr. Talbot, any comments on the application? I'll go to Mrs. Hand first if you have any comments.
I two questions, I guess, and then a comment. The town engineer's comments, I think those are both important comments and I'm wondering if those got addressed. The, the issue with backing up into the town right of way, we usually don't. I thought we didn't allow it, but I, I I, I know we at least don't encourage it. And the issue with dumpster access, I'm just wondering if those were addressed.
Thank, I can speak on that and Stephen, feel free to add. Again, it comes down to what we, the paved area that is on the proposed plan is what already exists. And we looked at reconfiguring the vehicles so that you couldn't back up onto the site. There's the, the property is less than 0.1 acres. And the dumpster area, the depth of the property is such that the, you can actually, there's room in front of the parking, of the vehicle to have a dumpster. And, and I agree with Mrs. Hand as far as there's a regulation. And if we were proposing it, there'd be another conversation. What the site had done was use the paved area for the parking and the refuse removal as it exists. So it's really, if we looked at alternatives and moving the dumpster around, it might compromise the lawn area that's on the south side of the two parking areas. And we thought that would be a better approach, that they'd be actually hidden in front of the vehicles. So we don't disagree with the regulation, what we're, but I'm here with something that's preexisting, nonconforming, if you will.
It's my understanding that that's currently a driveway, not parking spaces.
Um, so there's, the plan presented is an A2 survey by licensed land surveyor. There's, the, the residential units are currently vacant. There's, there's no parking there, obviously. The fence that had historically separated to was deteriorated, so had been removed. Quite frankly, like, and as you know, there've been many years that we've been together looking at some of those reservations. The hope was that there could be something that would be more cohesive with the adjoining properties and it just. And so, you know, we took a fence down to, to work with our neighbors. You know, we've, I've actually been knocking on doors in that entire block to see if everyone else would. And it got complicated from there. So here we are with what our site. So that is, there are no easements there. It's not a driveway. It's a parking space for that property. There's no relationship between this property. so that is, there are no easements there. It's not a driveway. It's a parking space for that property. There's no relationship between this property and any of the adjoining property, uh, properties. We wish there were. We were always looking at the bigger picture. As many of you on the commission know, we've been before you with, um, conversation and plan development. And in this case, we were not able to, um, make that happen.
May I add something?
Sure.
If you, if you were to do a traffic calculation, the study on Wallace Avenue, Wallace Avenue, despite the fact that it's technically a street, is, is more like a parking access lane, a parking lot access lane than any other road that I know of in town. People really treat that whole area as a kind of glorified parking lot. And so if you were ever to, to allow backing out into, uh, uh, into what is legally a road, um, this would seem to be a location where it would be least offensive.
And my comment, um, that, that all kind of leads to my comment, which is just briefly, I, I mean, I think the commission will have to determine whether or not they agree that that's a pre-existing condition. But there is, I do know that there is no formal access. Um, my comment, I guess, is more for the commission. Um, I just think that this is a reminder, um, certainly for me and for the commission, that when we write regulations, um, we need to bear in mind that the representations being made at the time for specific properties might not be, what we actually end up having come before us. Um, so I think we did write regulations that, um, were designed for what we'd like to see and what we'd like to see happen in the town center. Not based on any particular property, and I'm, I'm glad that we did that. At this particular situation, there's a non-conformity claim, so there's not really a lot of comment to be made one way or the other about the replacement of the, the apartments. Um, but I do think it speaks to sort of process, and when we're creating zoning regulations, you know, I, I think we, it's important to remember that, um, representations aren't always what we will end up with as part of the application. So I think it's appropriate, and well, it is appropriate, that we write regulations sort of for what we'd like to see happen and not based on individual representations.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. I appreciate you making those comments because I believe this whole thing has become a very teachable moment, at least for me. With that, uh, commission members, uh, Mr. Talbot, do you have any comments?
Yes. Just have two comments. One is sort of a reiteration of the issue of the dumpster. I think the commission has to make a determination as to whether or not that proposed location dumpster is even in compliance with the zoning regulation, regardless of, regardless of any other consideration. Ask, need to be, needs to be clear to you that it does comply with the zoning regulations. Number two, there are engineering comments that have to do with the extension of the sidewalk across this, um, driveway, parking area, that, that sort of thing. That hasn't been addressed. The town engineer is concerned about this, what, if you down there now, it does not look in any way, shape or form like a driveway for these two, both, uh, apartments. It looks like a pull-through. It looks like a, it's like what it is now. So there's a way to get back in, in behind three fifty, three seven. So in order to, if you're going to turn into a driveway, you need to turn it into a driveway. And one of the ways you would do that is by extending the sidewalk across the front of, of this existing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Talbot. I believe those comments were, uh, you know, from the, uh, from our, uh, engineering department that were, uh, you know, from June thirtieth. The, I, I guess the, the question on the dumpster, how does the dumpster, in fact, get access? There's a car parked in, you know, went right in front of the dumpster. How would that be accessed? I know most refuge companies generally come around in the, in the early morning, or so I suspect there'd be a car parked there.
So.
Would we just go out there and throw the bags over the cars?
Yeah, and, and so, and, and so for the two comments, the, 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 the one, the engineering comment about the, I guess whether the sidewalk is raised or, or lowered is a, is a personal preference. And I know there's been a lot of work done on Wallace Ave. So however they see that appropriate, we are agree, agreeable. So if they, if the commission, um, uh, believes with the guidance of the engineering department that it should be raised, so to speak, you know, we're agreeable to that. Um, as far as the dumpster and the law, um, we believe it'd be a relatively low frequency use of the dumpster. And so that's why we thought having it in front of the vehicles out of sight and having the pickup designated pickup time as so, so that there would, the vehicles wouldn't be there, uh, during the day when perhaps the tenants will be at work. You, you typically, the, the dumpsters are, uh, Monday through Friday. You know, so that's how we propose to, uh, remedy that. And again, you know, Mr. Chairman, it's clearly not something that it, it's in the regulation. There's some foresight like that would, on a normal, on a site where there's room and there's some options. Certainly, I, I would understand and would be on a site plan. In this case, the alternatives would be to move it towards like the lawn area, towards the front, or have the canisters that would be sort of moving back and forth privately, um, from the sidewalk to the back. And we thought having the fenced in area in front of the vehicles where it was caged was out of sight, uh, hidden and most desirable for that property and the surrounding property.
Okay. The, uh, just looking, when you're saying it's going to be screened and, uh, you know, you're going to have a fence, what type of fence? I think we all know the fence is generally around this property, some of the adjoining properties are chain link fences that are falling down. Uh, I would assume that it's not going to be a chain link fence that you're proposing on, you know, uh, on, on the property lines, as well as around the, uh, around the dumpster, again, being that this is residential, and I think you'd want to make it a little bit more attractive rather than chain link fences.
The, the, we would, um, put a vinyl type fencing that's consistent with the fencing on the adjacent property that was just installed, which, uh, the Wallace property had done some work, um, for their dumpster. So we would do a, a type of screening consistent with that, which is not chain link, which is.
Okay, so that, yeah, it's a vinyl, it's a vinyl fence, and that would be, uh, on the, I guess it would be on the west side of the property as well as on the north side of the property where you, but, uh, you know, the, uh, it was at Wallace property, I'm not sure.
In this, we would do it on four sides here.
On the four sides. And I assume, I, I know on some properties, having gates on dumpsters is somewhat challenged. There will be a gate on this dumpster. The gate will be, uh, will be closed, and if it's taken off, it'll be replaced.
Yes, and that's a cha, as you know, that's a little bit of a challenge with the dumpster companies. What happens, that they don't get out of the truck, they use the forks to move the gates, and they pull them out of the ga, pull them out of the, uh, the, the corrals. They pull the, hey, the, the doors off the hinges. So it's a little bit of a challenge with the technologies that the refuse companies have for moving trash right now.
No, I understand that, but it seems like that's more their problem. There would seem to be multiple refuge companies that one could use. But anyway, uh, commission members with, uh, any comments for the, uh, the applicant, beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I want to be clear. I know we're, we're talking dumpster now and, and the location. So I'm rereading the engineering memo of June thirtieth. So are, is the planning office staff in favor of the driveway apron and heavy-duty concrete sidewalk? Did I hear that?
I believe Mr. Talbot said yes. I'm not sure. Uh, Mrs. Hand, I believe she'd like to.
As opposed to, as opposed, yes, if these are going to become parking spaces, then yes, we would support engineering's methods.
All right. I, I guess, yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Hand. I mean, my, my thought on this is, it's, it's kind of exciting. This is the second downtown application we're hearing in a meeting, and, and we haven't had a lot of activity. I, I think I'm on record with everybody about the downtown parking. I think the applicant's making a, a good effort to provide parking where there is parking. I don't want to create a bad situation because of the dumpster, um, whether it be, you know, so it's not ideal, but I would support the idea of the driveway apron and the concrete sidewalk because it would be a challenge, you know, but it's a challenge for the people who decide ultimately to live there. And the, ultimately, the, the garbage collection company would have to, has to deal with the dumpster, and, and so I, it's not desirable, but I, I don't see it, it'd be a reason to stop this. So I would like the, um, I would support the engineering and planning and zoning effort to have the driveway apron and the heavy du, heavy-duty concrete sidewalk. Other than that, I have no comments on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have any comments either. I, I, I do support this, and, you know, I echo Commissioner Fitzsimmons's comments that, uh, you know, with the suggestions and, uh, from planning and zoning and engineering, and really the applicant, all these, you know, minor details, uh, should be worked out. So I, I really have no questions and would support this.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Uh, Mr. Vanoyen?
No comments.
Mr. Matarazzo?
Um, yeah, I would, uh, also, uh, support this. And, um, and it's just my opinion. Um, this, the dumpster is, is, is going to be servicing just the two units? If, if that's, if I'm correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, in my opinion, I would think the, uh, bins that are, you know, brought to the curb manually would make much more sense. But, you know, that's, that's my opinion. You can, you can have a much smaller, um, you know, trash area or dumpster area footprint with the, uh, manual carts. Um, you wouldn't have to worry about if cars were in the way, the tenants could walk them out to the curb. You know, I, I would support the parking or support the, the sidewalk, uh, heavy-duty sidewalk. Now, the, other than that, I, I would support this. I mean, it's, it's a property that needs addressing, and, uh, it's already not conforming. It appears it's going to be less conforming, so, uh, I would, you know, definitely support it.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo.
Mr. Heinz? I, I don't have any further, uh, comments, um, other, or questions other than what everybody else has said. I support it. I support this project. I think it's a great project, and I'd like to see it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
I'm going to remain consistent, Mr. Chairman. Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I bring you back to the applicant. Uh, listening to Mr. Matarazzo's comments, as, as far as having, uh, you know, bins, you could, uh, perhaps put those bins in the, uh, you know, in the same general area where the dumpster is, probably even, you know, reducing, uh, a little bit of that space where the dumpster is. And then, uh, you know, having the, uh, the two tenants, uh, on trash day to, you just bring their, uh, bring the bins out to the curb. It would seem that that, it would certainly eliminate, uh, you know, a problem with, uh, uh, with, with, with the, uh, refuge company coming in, you know, and picking up the dumpster as well as perhaps doing damage to the gate. So I, I guess I'd, I'd like to hear a response from the, uh, the applicant on that.
Yeah, I appreciate the suggestion, and, uh, I think it's a good suggestion, and, and then, and we're agreeable to that.
Okay, thank you. But we'll still have, but we'll still have the vinyl fencing all around, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll still maintain the same corral, if you will, and then we'll have the two, um, the, the blue bins with wheels that would be walked out to the curb side.
Sure. And again, it may even be possible to reduce that area, but I'd kind of leave that up to you. Uh, if there's, uh, any comments, again, this is, uh, it's not a public hearing, but are there any comments from the public, uh, on the application? Again, I don't see that there are any people that are, uh, interested in commenting. Guess I would leave it, uh, back, any commission members that would like to make any final comments or, or staff? I don't see anyone, uh, that would like to do that. So at this point in time, I would, uh, I would entertain a motion on the, uh, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application two oh eight dash two zero, site plan, D. Natale, two eighty-two, uh, Center Street. Uh, site plan for Vincenzo D. Natale to construct an approximately two thousand square foot, two-story, two-unit apartment building on point oh nine at three eighty-two Center Street. I've shown on plans entitled, uh, Land of D. Natale Realty LLC, two eighty-two dash, I'm sorry, three eighty-two dash three eighty-four Center Street, eight and ten Wallace Ave, uh, town of Wallingford dated five twenty, twenty, subject to comments from Thomas Talbot, Talbot Planner to Vincenzo D. Natale dated six twenty-nine, twenty, as applicable comments and recommended condition of approval in inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Storage Divisions, to Thomas Talbot Planner dated seven, seven, twenty. Comments of Allison Kapachinsky, Town Engineer, to Planning and Zoning Office dated five, twelve, twenty. Sediment and erosion control bond of one thousand dollars to be posted before commencement of work. Comments, Fire Marshal Michael Goodell, Goodellski to Vincenzo D. Natale dated, uh, six, ten, twenty, twenty.
If I could, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Vanoyen.
Do we want to say anything about the dumpsters?
Uh, yeah, I guess first, I would, uh, guess we eliminate the comment from the Fire Marshal because we received no comments from the Fire Marshal. And if I could also make a, uh, an amendment or a correction to the comments from, uh, the senior engineer, that is dated July second, two thousand twenty.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, and then, yes, I believe there was discussion on, uh, instead of the, uh, instead of the dumpsters, having, uh, the rollout bins.
Uh, okay, ma, I was gonna say maintain, uh, screening for trash receptables, whether dumpster or totes.
I, I think we, I guess, I think I, I think we've agreed to have it as, you know, the, uh, the, the roll-up and the, the totes, whatever.
Okay, totes. Roll-ups.
And, you know, and then, uh, just a comment from, so we're specific as far as the town engineer, as far as, you know, installing the driveway apron and a heavy-duty concrete sidewalk per town standard to take place of the crosswalk and the sidewalk ramps.
As noted.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. I can always rely on you. Uh, we have a second on the application voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Matarazzo?
Yes.
Christopher Vanoyen?
Yes.
And, uh, I vote yes, uh, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Yeah, next item is, uh, it's an accessory apartment for Doolittle. It's for Miller Road. Is the applicant here?
Uh, I'm not sure if the applicant is here, but it's Stephen Lazarus.
Representative?
I am the representative, yes.
Okay, good. Uh, Mr. Matarazzo, if you would please, uh, read, uh, uh, enter into the record all of, uh, the correspondence for, uh, the site plan accessory apartment, our Doolittle for Miller Road.
Mr. Chairman, we have an interdepartmental referral dated June second, two thousand twenty, signed by the Fire Marshal. We have an inter-office memorandum to Tom Talbot, acting town planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated July ninth, two thousand twenty, and I believe that would be it.
Thank you very much. And again, uh, the applicant's representative would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Stephen Lazarus, uh, architect with Lazarus and Sargent Architects here in town. Uh, I'm here, uh, representing.
Uh, I'm here representing Mr. Dulittle and with, and his application to, for an accessory apartment at Four Miller Road in Wallingford. Uh, and thank you, Mrs. Hand, for, for showing us the aerial of the property. The accessory apartment is inserted into the house with no changes to the site at all. Uh, and this is, uh, this is an aerial of, of the property. You can see from the aerial that there's, uh, more than ample parking for the principal residence and the accessory apartment. And that the dormers, the space that is over the garage is, is clearly appropriate in volume for an accessory apartment. The apartment itself is a one-bedroom apartment. It weighs in at 712 square feet, which is within the allowable size range and is less than the percentage allowed for overall percentage of, of the total building. And, and you have the plan now, thank you again, Casey, of the, of the apartment in front of you. And that is the 712 square feet and that is entirely above an existing garage. Uh, it's, it's actually a pretty straightforward insertion of an accessory apartment into an existing house.
Thank you very much. Uh, any comments from either Mrs. Hand or Mr. Talbot? I don't believe so. Uh, any comments from the commission? Mr. Fitzsimmons? Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen.
No, no comments.
Thank you. Mr. Madarazzo?
No comments.
Mr. Vanoy.
No, sir.
And I have no comments. At this point in time, I would, and I don't believe there's any members of the public who would like to talk on the application. Uh, actually, Mr. Heinz and Mr. Allison, do you have any comments?
No.
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
It's just, but thank you. At this particular point in time, I would entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 209-20, site plan for Dulittle for a 712 square foot accessory apartment at Four Miller Drive. As shown on plans entitled Dulittle accessory apartment. What was that?
Uh, no, please continue.
For Miller Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut dated 6/20, subject to comments of the Wallingford Health Department dated 5/29/19 and comments from the Water and Store Division dated July 9, 2020.
Are there any corrections or additions? I would just like to make two, should be final inspection by our zoning enforcement officer. And also the comments concerning the Wallingford Health Department. We had no comments from the Wallingford Health Department, so that should be eliminated.
I was just looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. Voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
Christopher Vanoy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The application's been approved. Okay, moving down to bond releases and reduction. You're welcome. Uh, thank Mrs. Hand also.
Yes, thank you very much. Your intentional part.
She was your savior this evening.
Yes, I appreciate it.
We're now with bond releases, bond reductions. And Mr. Talbot, I'll let you take the wheel on, uh, on the rest of the, that part of the agenda.
Um, if, if.
Yes.
If I'm not needed for the rest of this meeting, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Talbot and bow out at this point since he handled the rest of the agenda.
I think that's fine. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hand. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as far as bond releases and reductions, the only bond that's ready for release would be number 11, 3G Construction on 344 Greve Road. That bond can be released. That's the only one.
We have a motion to, uh, release the bond on Greve Road as recommended by Mr. Talbot.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bond for 3G Construction, 344 Greve Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Moving on, reports from officers and staff. We have administrative approvals. Does anyone have any questions on the administrative approvals? Seeing none, moving down to ZBA decisions from the 15th of June. Anyone, any questions on those? And moving further down to notice for the ZBA meeting on July 20th, 2020. Does anyone have any questions on those? And seeing none, brings us down to our zoning enforcement log. From Mr. Talbot, not sure if Mr. Talbot would like to make any comments on it. If not, I just ask commission members if they have any questions on the zoning enforcement log that we may want to report in Mrs.' story. And seeing none, at this point in time, I would entertain a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn our Monday, July 13th, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We're adjourned. I can just like to thank everybody for being patient. We were a bit delayed and also apologize for the way I butchered the first three or four applications. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.
Stay safe.